The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January 12, 2024. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier-News, and tap into Warren, and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I will call the roll. Mr. DeSai?
Yeah.
Ms. Keller?
Yes, here.
Mr. Molfetta? Mr. Otto?
Here.
Mr. Tor?
Yeah.
Mr. Valentino?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
And Mrs. Zahn?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. The first order of business tonight is to do interviews of our prospects, our candidates, for the empty seat on the Board of Education. I would call this an embarrassment of riches with very highly qualified candidates. We're very fortunate that there was so much interest. I'm going to just briefly go over how we're going to proceed. We will be drawing names for the sequence of speaking. The first opportunity to speak will be your opportunity to share that five-minute introduction as to why it is you're seeking a position on the Board of Education. Following that introduction, and oh, by the way, five minutes is a lot of time. Don't feel compelled to use it all. We just don't want you to feel restricted in any way. So please feel free to share anything you think is important, we know. Following the introduction, you will be asked three questions. We will rotate the order of response for those questions with about a minute answer expected, so these are not long questions, these are short questions. Following that, the Board will adjourn to executive session to discuss the candidates. Upon return, we will be appointing a member of the Board of Education who will be sworn in and will be seated immediately. Okay, so with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Keller to please draw the names. Our first candidate A is Nikki Dalton.
No, wait till we're going to pull all the names first, and then I'm going to do this.
Okay, candidate B is Mr. Rivas. Candidate C is Mr. Sparrow. And candidate D is Ms. Wong. And so with that, Ms. Dalton, you have your five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Dalton. I have lived in Warren for nine years, and I'm a parent to two Mount Horab students. I'm applying for the vacancy on the Board of Education because I think it's important to be an active participant in my children's education. I believe I am well qualified because I have been very involved in the district since my first child started kindergarten in 2019. I participated in community stakeholder meetings that created the district's current strategic plan back in the fall of 2019. I have also been an active member of the Strategic Plan Stakeholder Voice and Engagement Committee for the past several years, specifically serving on the Safety Subcommittee. I was part of the planning for Elementary Growth Working Group that evaluated different rezoning possibilities and ultimately aided in decision-making for the district's rezoning process. I'm thankful that the district continues to provide stakeholders with so many opportunities to give feedback and be involved in the decision-making process, and I think it's important to take advantage of these opportunities. I've also worked as a substitute teacher in the Warren Township School District for the past two years. I am currently still on the substitute list, but I am willing to give up my ability to do so in order to serve on the Board of Education, as I'm aware that I cannot do both. This is also my second year serving as co-Vice President on the Mount Horab PTO. I have really enjoyed working closely with Mr. Cook and the Mount Horab community, and I'm in the building frequently with all the volunteering opportunities that the PTO has afforded me. I would also like to share that I have attended Board of Education meetings either in person or on Zoom, and have spoken at meetings and corresponded with the Board on several occasions. Another thing that sets me apart as a candidate for this vacancy is my unique dual perspective. Not only am I a district parent, but I also taught public kindergarten for 11 years in Morris Plains, New Jersey. This helps me understand issues from multiple perspectives. I am aware of the opportunities and the challenges that arise in education, as well as the dynamic learning, dynamic nature of learning. I have no agenda other than to do what is best for the students in district. I would personally strive to uphold the district's mission statement and keep an open mind and consider board matters from all angles. Because I am involved and visible in the district, I feel this helps me to be approachable to many of our stakeholders. While I hold a teaching certificate from the College of St. Elizabeth, I also received a business degree from Villanova University, which could aid in understanding the business side of things. I also want to share that I fully understand the commitment and responsibility that is involved in being a Board Member. I have the time to commit to regularly attend meetings in person and participate in various other related committees. I intend to be a present and active member if selected to fill the vacancy. I appreciate your time and hope that you will consider my dedication to the district along with my specific qualifications when making your choice to fill the empty seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dalton. Candidate B is Mr. Rivas.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Raul Rivas, and I'd like to express my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My wife and I have been a Warren resident since 2019, and our two children attend ALT Elementary School. I was born in New York City and raised in Exeter, New Jersey. My mother immigrated from Columbia as a teenager. My father retired NYPD captain, immigrated from Cuba to live the American dream. As a child, I attended Leonia School System and graduated from Rutgers University in 2003 with an Administration of Justice degree. I have been an active member of the community since 2019. I have coached our sons, Tebo. I help and shrug kids at Warren Combat Martial Arts School, and I'm actively seeking a coaching position for the Watchon Hills Pop Warner Football Team, and I am an active member of the Stonecrest Community Church here in Warren. My reasons for wanting to serve on the Warren Board of Ed are as follows. One, I want to continue to ensure the children and the families of this community are put first. Two, we need to prioritize the safety and security of our schools, teachers, and children. Three, my wife and I sought to move to Warren because we knew the reputation of this community, and schools were the best of the best. I want to be a part of keeping our schools at this level and better them each opportunity we can, as best we can. I am best fit for this role because as a career regional business manager, I have been responsible for serving my physicians and their patients. Similarly, as a parent and a taxpayer, it would be my responsibility to serve our children and community. Multiple times over the course of my career, I have been a member of Ethical and Diversity Committees for companies for whom I have worked for. My diverse cultural background, as well as my oftentimes challenging educational journey as a child, has molded my reasons for seeking a seat on the Warren Board of Education. Many people can speak about what changes they feel is needed. I want to actively pursue that role while honoring the values and the wishes of the parents of Warren and serving our great community. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Candidate C, Mr. Sparrow.
Good evening. My name is Doug Sabara. I am a 45-year-old resident of Warren Township and a proud parent, dedicated father of two beautiful children, Bryn, age six. My daughter attends the ALT school in first grade. My son is a four-year-old little firecracker who attends the Mount Horab pre-K for the last six months we've been preparing for the journey into kindergarten, migrating completely to ALT. The reason I have applied for this board position, I provide a broad set of skills rooted within 20-plus years of corporate America. I have vision, value, agility, and partnership, and I'll explain that a little bit. Vision is not something that is easy to identify or create. It comes from broad experience, observation, and taking time to learn diverse perspectives. Certainly, the experience is a very big piece of that. I believe my vision for this township is to make sure that the school is one of the most valuable assets that we represent as a community. When it comes to agility, 20-plus years in corporate America, very simply put, I'm experienced in negotiating, public speaking, high-value budget experience. The value piece, this board has an obligation to provide value to the community, to its residents, to the students. I believe that my skill set would bring or enhance the current mission of this board. And then the partnership piece, I'm an exceptional and empathetic listener. With that, I have broad communication skills. Those will only complement what the current work that this board is doing. Listen, I'm not applying for this board position trying to change what anybody here is doing. I'm only here to enhance it through my broad experience and my passion for this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sabara. Candidate D is Ms. Wong.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cynthia Wong. I live in Warren Township, and I have three children, all of whom are either attending or will all be attending Warren Township schools. I work as a lawyer. I graduated from Seton Hall School of Law in 2010. I mostly do trial practice, mostly in civil litigation and commercial litigation. For many years, I was working at a nonprofit organization, Somerset, and they actually had a school there, and I was very much involved in helping to operate and run that school. It was a private international boarding school. It had a little over 100 students, about 10 to 15 staff members, and it had students both locally and students from abroad. I worked there for many years, serving as their assistant director and legal counsel. And in that position, it was a great place to work. In that position, it really allowed me to see both the ins and outs of how a school operates. I got to see all the daily workings, so students coming in, buses coming in, talking to parents, managing teacher schedules, and making sure students go to their classes and do what they're supposed to do, and make sure that teachers do the same. So all the daily operations of the school, but also as serving as their legal counsel, I got to see the school from a broader perspective. So whenever there were legal issues or they had to do some kind of educational research, I would help the school with that. And whenever they would have to appear before a regulatory agency of some sort, if they were expanding facilities, I would also represent the school for those matters. And also, at some point when I was working there, it was also going through the accreditation process, so I was their legal advocate. So I think, you know, working at that school in that role, it really made me understand how much goes into a school, just so kids can go to school every day and not worry about any of those things. It was a very rewarding role, and I hope that my position in that role and experience can help me assist in developing good policy in Warren Township. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. We're going to move on to the short-answer questions, starting with candidate B, Mr. Rivas. We followed then by candidate C, D, and then A, as we will be rotating for each of the short-answer questions. So to Mr. Rivas, the first of our short-answer questions is as follows. What do you regard as the number-one issue facing the Board of Education during your proposed term of office, and how would you propose addressing that issue?
The number-one issue regarding schools that...
The number-one issue facing the Board of Education during your proposed term of office, and how would you propose addressing that issue?
I would say providing somewhat tighter security for these schools. I understand that there are several of the schools in the surrounding area that already provide that. I think it would be a matter of coming to a common understanding, a common ground, and really just doing what's best for the children, putting the children first, obviously, the teachers, and just our school systems, and making sure that, you know, we have protection in these schools. Obviously, we've seen, you know, so many of these tragedies that have occurred throughout the country. I think, you know, children are our greatest resource and treasure, and that's what I would prioritize at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Mr. Sabara, same question. What do you regard as the number-one issue facing the Board of Education during your proposed term of office, and how would you propose addressing that issue?
Technology, the application of, the sourcing of, the introduction of technology into the school system. The next generation of students, as they would aspire to join the workforce, will be challenged more than any generation in history. Having access to the technology, teaching them how to apply those technologies in a way that they can become valuable and contribute to society, that's going to be a delicate balance of technology and human interaction, and it's going to be a complicated issue for time to come.
Thank you, Mr. Sabara. Ms. Wong, same question. What do you regard as the number-one issue facing the Board of Education during your proposed term of office, and how would you propose addressing that issue?
I think for any school, district, or Board of Education, right now we're in a very rapidly changing society. Kids nowadays have to know more and more, and it's really, overall, just preparing our kids, equipping them with skills that are marketable in the future and useful in society, and how to be competitive. I think technology was a great point. We all use technology now, and I know that schools are right now, you know, introducing smart boards. My son uses an iPad, a laptop in school, but right now, it's, I feel that kids are using a lot of technology. I use technology, but I don't know how a computer works. I mean, I can use it, but I can play games on my iPhone, but how to develop a game on an iPhone? How to actually take this piece of machinery and not just use it, but work with it, I think, is something that kids can actually start learning from very early on, and then we won't need to, you know, send our kids to, like, Code Ninja or something like that.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Ms. Dalton, same question.
I think I would have to say student achievement is a big issue right now. I know that the district is implementing some new programs, so I think staying on top of that, as I mentioned before, learning is very dynamic and changes frequently. I know when I was a teacher, you know, we started with certain programs, and by the time I was leaving teaching, you know, things were coming back. It's very cyclical, so I think staying on top of those things that is going to keep our school district at the top, you know, one of the top in the state, and really, you know, make sure that our kids are getting those good test scores and keeping up the reputation of the Warren Township School District.
Thank you, Ms. Dalton. The next short-answer question will start with Mr. Sabara, and that question is, "The Warren Board of Education is a high-functioning public body with a reputation for mutual respect, candid dialogue, and compromise. Please describe your experience working with committees or groups."
So I've worked with a variety of committees, worked with a variety of business resource groups. I think one of my proudest achievements was being a Board Member for the United Way of the New Jersey District for UPS. A lot of compromise took place in regards to how to allocate funds, understanding that when we would drive or we would go into our campaign drives, we'd be raising in excess of $6, $7 million. So there was a lot of competition, a lot of conversation about which programs would benefit the most from our time and attention, which programs we could bring in front of the workforce to bolster additional or increase those contributions. Compromise was a big part of that. It was, those were some tough conversations to make sure people understood why a decision was being made, making sure that people were comfortable, and we were very visible in communicating why a decision to abstain from supporting one organization in favor of another was made. Communication is the key to any successful board conversation or organization, and within conversation, you need to be an empathetic listener. You need to listen to someone's perspective, take the time to understand what is driving their passion, and with that, make recommendations and do it with confidence, conviction.
Thank you, Mr. Sabara. Ms. Wong, question now goes to you. I'll repeat it one more time. "The Warren Board of Education is a high-functioning public body with a reputation for mutual respect, candid dialogue, and compromise. Please describe your experience working with committees or groups."
I would say most of my experience in working with committees and groups is through my nonprofit work. Like I said, for many years, I worked at a nonprofit organization. It was called the New Jersey Chinese Community Center, and it had a variety of programs, everything from helping Asian-Americans assimilate to the US, to helping them with obtaining visas. The school thing, the school they later operated was out of necessity, and it was actually not there when I first started working for the organization. So seeing how they started a school, you get all your licenses and approvals, but then there were no committees. So I think a lot of my work was helping prioritize what we needed, what committees we needed, someone to do student activities, someone to do grading, someone to do parent communication, someone to do scheduling. And I really learned the value of, in terms of having limited resources, learning how to prioritize and try with limited resources to still give the maximum environment for the students.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Ms. Dalton?
Sure. So just from my, you know, introduction, I mentioned that I was a part of a lot of different committees within the district. I have been involved with the Strategic Planning Committee. In the very beginning, that was the community, you know, input committee meetings where we had, we met with a consultant, and it was teachers, you know, residents, parents, administration, lots of different people involved in that. That was pretty broad, just to kind of narrow down what we were looking at for the strategic plan. And then, as I mentioned, I've been on the Stakeholder Committee, where I've been very involved with the Safety Subcommittee, and again, that is also comprised of teachers and parents at administration. And then the PTO, I have more of a leadership role on that one as a co-Vice President. I feel like I've worked very well with the other members of the PTO. We got a lot of stuff accomplished last year, and I think that it will be the same this year. A lot of sharing of ideas, like I said, lots of opportunities to be in the building and see what's going on in the school. And yeah, I think I've been a big part of several committees that are very involved in the district, and I look at this as another opportunity to continue to be very involved.
Mr. Rivas? Would you like the question again, or you good?
I'm good. Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. So for 17 years of my career, I've been a regional business manager, working with some of the largest biotech companies in the world, and I worked directly with hospitals, negotiating contracts and treatment protocols for patients. And I've been a top-ranking business manager several times throughout my career because of my ability to negotiate, listen, and communicate with our business partners, find a common ground, and create the best solution possible for our, for our business partners, and make sure that it's a, you know, it's a win-win for everyone. And it's all about understanding the needs of your clientele and just, you know, compromising and making sure that you're providing value always and not putting yourself first and thinking about what their needs are, and that's what I would do if I was given the opportunity to serve the taxpayers and the children of this community.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. The final short-answer question will start with Ms. Wong, and that question is as follows. Acting as a member of the Board of Education is demanding and includes preparation for and attendance at board meetings, committee meetings, and various outside events. Each of you are valuable and busy members of the community with various other obligations. Please share your thoughts on balancing your time commitments in a way that meets the obligations of being a member of the Board.
I believe that, given the nature of my work, right now I have my own solo practice. I have a caseload, and I work on a task basis. So you finish your work, but I can, you're basically done with that task. So I feel that I can be flexible with my work schedule and my caseload, and I would have the time to devote to attending meetings and coming to whatever the Board, whenever the Board needs me. And I think that the reason why we all take the time out to apply for something like this is because we just care enough.
Ms. Dalton?
So I currently am a stay-at-home mom, so I do have the flexibility with my schedule. My husband is also in education, so he is able to be home when I am not, which is very nice to give me that flexibility. I do understand the commitment, and I would be able to attend all of the meetings, and as I mentioned before, I would also be able to participate in any subcommittees that may arise. I would take it very seriously, as I know that it is a big commitment.
Mr. Rivas?
So with my job, it's very flexible. I create my own hours, so I do have the ability to rearrange my schedule as I see, you know, as necessary in order to make sure that I fit in all my priorities. But I'm very passionate about this, and this is something I take very seriously, and I'm sure when I say that, I speak for all of us here. We wouldn't be here, you know. This is important not only for us, but for our community and our children. So I, you know, like anything else, we all live busy lives, and we just, you know, we're very organized and very coordinated, and I make sure that, you know, when I have something important like this, that it's at the top of my priority list, and it's getting done.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Mr. Sabara?
There is no thing more important than my children, their development, and the development of the children in this community. Personally, I made a life-changing decision almost six years ago when I left the position as a Regional Operations Director and took a job in procurement, leading logistics procurement for multinational CPG. I now work from home three days a week. When I am in the office, my commute is nine miles to Piscataway. I am within striking distance of my children at all times. So to say I don't have time would be completely incorrect. I've made this community a priority, making time to be part of this board and contribute to this town, no issue.
Thank you, Mr. Sabara. Thank you to all of the candidates. I described this as an embarrassment of riches. It truly is. You're all very qualified, and we're fortunate that each of you have stepped forward and come to us and sought this position. At this time, the Board will move into executive session to discuss your candidacy. Ms. Keller?
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 104-11, permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss material disclosure of which constitutes an unwarranted invasion of individual privacy. Action will be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meetings anticipated to be approximately 20 minutes, and be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The Board is now in executive session. Opposed, abstained? The Board is now in executive session.
Motion to return.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The Board is now back in public session. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Weinstein?
Resolve that the Board of Education appoints Nikki Dalton to the Board for a term of September 16, 2024, to December 31, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any other motions? Seeing no other motions, Mr. Hagel?
All right, I will call. I will call the roll on the motion before the Board. Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Malfetta?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. On?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to Ms. Dalton. I do want to, Board is just going to take a brief moment here so that Ms. Dalton can familiarize herself with the oath of office. And I also want to personally extend thanks to the remaining candidates. So we're in open session, but breaking first.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Dalton, can I see for a second?
Yeah.
This will be your seats.
Thank you. We have the motion.
Okay.
So a couple of questions.
Sure.
Can I call them all?
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. That requires me to like...
Oh, you're, that requires me to like.
First one on my own.
That's not bad. My third option. There you are. Rich.
So, we took.
Which option?
The one, the one that didn't have. I didn't know that.
Uh, that side is probably easier. Yeah. They all go there.
Thank you so much.
Also, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read the line. So, but I want you to.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
I'm gonna sign this one, so.
Oh, good, thank you. Yes, he was great. You don't think I was?
We are live. Yes.
Are we ready for the oath of office? Okay, then. Ms. Dalton and, uh, Mr. Hagel? So where the, where you're on camera?
Maybe not, because I want you to raise your right hand.
Okay. Well, I can hold up my left hand.
There you go.
Mrs. Dalton, can you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Nicole Dalton, do solemnly swear.
I, Nicole Dalton, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state.
In the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I, Nicole Dalton, do solemnly swear.
I, Nicole Dalton, do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law for the office.
Prescribed by law for the office.
Of member of a Board of Education.
Of member of a Board of Education.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
And that I am not disqualified due to a conviction.
And that I am not disqualified due to a conviction.
Of a crime or offense listed in NJ SA eighteen A twelve dash one.
Of a crime or offense listed in NJ SA eighteen A twelve dash one.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
All the duties of that office.
All duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Your seat right over there. Ready to take a quick picture before we?
Yeah.
Go back into.
We have all the board members. Just all on photograph.
We're gonna swish up?
Ah, swish.
You want us to go behind?
Yay.
That was a good idea.
Should might have sent it down out of the way. Thank you.
Alright, great.
Ms. Keller, minutes.
Resolve that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four Board meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright. I will call the roll. Mrs. Dalton? You can say abstain.
Abstain.
Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Malfeta?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. On?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle.
The Board received one email regarding food at class parties. There is no HIV information to report and there was one in-school suspension at Warren Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Um, again, congratulations to Nikki Dalton, the newest member of the Board of Education and, um, gratitude and thanks to the applicants who sought this seat, all of whom were, um, exemplary and, and it was really hard choice. Thank you to, um, an anonymous donor who has, uh, made a donation of nine hundred and forty-six dollars for a front lobby display at Mount Horro, which will be approved on the agenda this evening. Um, I also want to, uh, extend a thank you to the Warren Middle School Choir, students from all five of our schools, um, countless members of staff, uh, who participated in the township's annual commemoration of nine eleven. I had the opportunity to attend that commemoration on nine eleven last week. And, um, it was, it was wonderful to see the children there participating. Uh, thanks to Kathy Reese in the township who, uh, assisted in, in making sure that our students were able to participate. And, uh, to the student speakers and I, I have no doubt that Dr. Mingle's probably gonna thank them as well. Uh, really, really proud of these kids who have spent, um, the beginning part of their school year, engaged in acts of kindness and encouraging others to pay it for, forward and perform acts of kindness as well. Um, so, really wonderful opportunity to see them. And a thank you to, um, a couple of local businesses, uh, Starbucks and Ambi, uh, who, um, are located here in town, who generously donated coffee for the commemoration, which our students and staff served to those who attended as, in fact, an act of kindness. Um, those are my remarks. Dr. Mingle, superintendent's remarks.
Thank you, Mrs. On. Uh, first of all, just to build on that, we were really excited and honored to be a part of the nine eleven ceremony here in Warren Township. The township has already asked us to do the same thing again next year, which I accepted, uh, on our behalf. I think it's a great way for the students of the district to not only learn about what nine eleven meant on that day, but also on how the country came together in the days that followed. And that's where the Days of Kindness comes from and the Pay It Forward nine eleven work that we've done in the schools. Um, but adding the student speakers, I thought, was particularly, uh, beneficial this year. Constantine Bellman and James Esposito are two eighth graders who wrote their speeches, worked with staff at Warren Middle School to fine tune them and deliver them. I mean, if you were there, you saw in quite remarkable fashion, uh, especially given, you know, all of the gravitas that the moment brings to, to that experience. If you haven't had a chance to see the ceremony, the full video is up on the township website. There was a link in last week's community briefing, which you can also get off of our district website, so I encourage you to, to check that out. We've had a great opening to the school year. I've been hesitant to say that every time somebody asks me how the opening was because I didn't want to jinx anything, but we're now midway through September, so it feels like a good time to, uh, compliment all of our students, our staff, administrators on the work that it takes to get ready for the first day. Uh, even from a transportation perspective, normally we, we prepare families that the first several days of school, we're going to have all kinds of bus disruptions. For the most part, that didn't really happen this year, and so that's due to a lot of people working really hard over the summer. So, uh, we're off and running here in the school year. With, I do want to remind the community, and you'll see more about this, uh, in the near future, that on Monday, November fourth, that's the day before Election Day, Monday, November fourth, we will be doing strategic planning, community input sessions during the day, in the afternoon, and in the evening. Uh, there will be specific details about how you can get involved. These are open to all members of the Warren Township community to come and participate with outside facilitators. You'll be asked what you believe the vision for the district should be for the next five years between twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty. So as we conclude this process and open up the new one, this is an opportunity to have your voice heard. And, uh, that feedback really does generate the goals that go into the, the strategic plan moving forward. So we encourage everybody to participate. We will also be offering focus groups for students at the elementary schools, at Warren Middle School, and students at Watchung Hills who went through our school so that we can hear about the experiences of current students as well as those that have come before. For the evening session, we are working with Watchung Hills Regional High School to have childcare available. There will be Watchung Hill students providing free childcare so that if we don't want childcare to be a reason that families don't come and participate in community input sessions, we will also have Spanish language interpreters at those sessions and we are working on providing transportation to those that might need that to come as well. So, we really want to make sure that everybody who wants to be here and contribute the events will be here at the middle school, have the ability to do that. And our facilitators will also do a survey so that everyone, even if they can't come that day, has a chance to give input as well. And then finally, the American Heart Association, um, has a challenge for fundraising across the country and we have some pretty remarkable success stories to share. They have asked, uh, permission to come and speak at a future board meeting to, to recognize what I'm going to share with you now, which I assumed everybody would be okay with. Uh, so I did say yes already, so if you're not okay with it, it's a little bit late, sorry. Um, Warren Middle School was honored as the Rookie of the Year School. This is for the entire country for being the school that raised the most money, raising, uh, over eighteen thousand dollars in its first year, participating in the American Heart Association Challenge. This was last year. Uh, Warren Middle School was also one of the top ten schools in the country for its fundraising number six, which is even more remarkable considering it was the first year the school ever participated. And Warren Middle School student Brandon Volosav was recognized for being the top individual fundraiser in the country for the second year in a row. But last year, he did that as a student in another school district before he moved to Warren and joined our community. He's the one that brought this, uh, to Nurse Lontai, who brought it to the middle school and the rest of the community. So, congratulations to everybody involved and, like I said, they'd like to come to a future meeting and recognize all those individuals here, which I think would be, would be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Dr. Mingle. We do have a presentation, so I will be handing it back to Dr. Mingle.
Okay. Alright, so every year at our first meeting after the school year begins, I give a little bit of a snapshot of what our enrollment looks like to give an update to the Board and the community on, on where things stand. Uh, Board members, I did share this via my update last Thursday, so if you need to see a, a closer up version, because there is some small text on it, that's, uh, in your email as well. So by enrollment by school over the last three years, uh, a couple of things I want to highlight on the slide here is that as, as you all, I'm sure, remember, between the twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we rezoned our, our elementary schools. And you can see the effects of that rezoning on the slides. Central's population went from three hundred and eight students to, in K, K through five to two hundred and fifty-five and K through five plus thirty-one preschool students. Mount Horro, prior to rezoning, was at a hundred and seventy-five K-five students, went up to two ninety-two as a result of rezoning. Woodland went down from two sixty-three to two twenty. That was all by design to match the enrollment to where we expected growth to come from in the coming years with, uh, development in the community. In this twenty-four, twenty-five school year, you can see ALT's population has come down a little. Central's went up by twenty-four students from last year to this year. I'm just looking at the K-five numbers, not the preschool there. Mount Horro went down a little bit and you can see the numbers from there. Across the bottom, that's the total as of, on the first two years, that's the total as of October fifteenth. That date is important because that's the date the state defines your enrollment by. So whatever your enrollment is on October fifteenth becomes the basis for all kinds of things, state aid and how you calculate. However, the number for twenty-four, twenty-five was on the first day of school. So you can see it's a little bit lower. That has already gone up since the first day of school and so we will see it be probably closer to last year's number by the time we get to October fifteenth, but that's where it was on the first day of school. So, as far as the enrollment goes, is it? Yeah. The, the orange there is the actual enrollment in the years going back to eighteen nineteen. You can see we were continuing the decline that had been going on for almost a decade at that point. We hit the end of that decline in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year and we've been coming up since then. The, the two blue colored lines are the demo- demographic projections, the lighter color being without new enrollment from housing or new housing enrollment, the darker blue color being the enrollment projected to, for us to experience in the new housing. What is unknown is when those new housing developments would open. And so there's sort of this exponential increase over time, depending on when they might open. And we'd been ahead of that so far. So in the first year after the demographic study, which was twenty-two, twenty-three, we were already above both projections. Right now, we're kind of hovering, uh, just under the high number, but we know that many of our new developments are not actually open yet. And so there's still more to come as far as enrollment goes. If we look at our enrollment only by the K-five schools, only by the, the students in K-five, I wanted to share what our demographic projection was compared to our actual enrollment for both last year and this year. So, in our rezoning year, we were pretty close to what we were hoping to hit with the rezoning. Central was actually a little bit bigger, as was Mount Horro, than we were looking for, but not considerably more. That's the new students that we weren't expecting to be here yet in those schools. This year, twenty-four, twenty-five, you can see that ALT, eight students lower than projected by the demographer. Central is thirty-nine students bigger than projected by the demographer. Mount Horro is about twenty-two smaller than projected and Woodland is exactly on what the projection said. So we're fairly close, we're in the range. Uh, I will say that most of the explanation for central being bigger than projected has to do with the fact that we house our autism program there and that program has grown much faster than we would have expected, uh, based on students who qualify for those services. Again, th- this is very small data on a screen right here, but this comes straight out of our demographic projection, which is published on the district website. And it's looking at each school we were expecting to see from year to year, there to be different discrepancies. And that's because children aren't born perfectly aligned to the zones where their parents live. And so, for example, in twenty-five, twenty-six, we project a big bump at Mount Horro from two seventy-eight to three thirty-two. That's projected based on what is a, a small fifth grade class going out and a large kindergarten class coming in. We'll see if that all plays out that way. I share this only to say, these kinds of ebbs and flows are built into the modeling with the idea that at the end of five years, our schools are basically even as enrollment levels out with full development of the community. Just an update on where kids are moving in, uh, in new housing. But just to restate, we are also getting new students from existing housing. This is not just from new housing. Uh, at the beginning of last school year, we had sixty-two students living in homes in new developments. At the opening of this school year, that number was eighty-two from just those developments that are on the screen. However, Astor Grove, uh, which is by the seventy-eight, King George seventy-eight, opened just late in the summer enough that it popped up on our radar, uh, with registrations right before the school year started. We have nineteen students living in Astor Grove and many more to come as they finish occupying. And we have started getting inquiries about the hills at Warren, which is in the woodland zone. We have seen signed agreements for people to move in during the school year. And Hillcrest Crossing would be the next large one after that, which is also in the woodland zone. We project a total of eighty-nine students in Astor Grove. That's including high school students, so that's not ours to worry about, but across the entire span. But the two there in orange in Woodland are the two biggest new developments. We project a hundred and ten students at the hills at Warren and a hundred and nine at Hillcrest Crossing and we don't have any of those students yet. So lest you are concerned about the small number at Woodland right now at the first day of school, this is why there are two hundred and thirteen students there now is so that we have room to bring in the students that are coming into new housing. So, one thing I did want to highlight about how the population of students has changed is the number of students who qualify for no-cost lunch. Pre-COVID, when we didn't run a lunch program, frequently people would speak about, there are no students who would qualify for a free lunch program. And the truth at that time was, there were very few. We didn't know for sure because we didn't participate, but probably it was in the single digits. As of two years ago, when we launched our, uh, the current model of the program, forty-six students or three percent of our student population qualified for that. And as you can see on the first day of school this year, a hundred and forty-two students. That's a significant shift in just two school years. It doesn't just affect lunch, it affects everything we do. It affects the way that we support families who want their children to go to general education preschool, which costs a significant amount of money. It affects families making decisions about whether their children are gonna participate in organizations in town that cost money, in school sports, and all sorts of things. in school sports and all sorts of things. And so it affects our operations in a lot of different ways. We've been planning for this, as you all know. We've known about this obligation of housing units um, for a while. This is the two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-five affordable housing obligation, which is a percentage of the total of ten sixty, one thousand sixty units. Our demographer projected a four hundred and eighteenth student increase from those housing units. So far, the numbers are pretty close to projection. The part we didn't know two years ago, when we made our rezoning decisions, was that from two thousand twenty-five to thirty-five, there will be another round of affordable housing obligation. This is in the news a lot right now because the numbers are going to be released in October, is what I understand. We don't know what that number exactly is going to be for Warren, but the numbers that are being floated are larger than they were in two thousand fifteen to twenty-five. And so while we may not know how many new homes are coming in the next ten years, unless something dramatically different happens than the legislation that was passed and the governor signed earlier in last year, we can expect to see more than four hundred and eighteen students coming out of the next round of housing. Now, that may not happen until the far side of those ten years. I don't know. But we have to be thinking about what that means for us as a school community. We were okay under the last round because we had declining enrollment for a decade. But at the end of this enrollment increase, we're going to be back right around where the district was at its high mark over two thousand students. We will not be able to absorb five hundred or a thousand more students at the end of two thousand thirty-five without carefully planning for facility expansion and capital planning. This board approved back in June a capital plan that includes lots of different things that are really important nuts and bolts facility things like cellphone and Wi-Fi upgrades, uh, having storage, security features like strobe lights, making sure that our doors are at the best they can be as far as the secu- being able to secure our classrooms. And you can see the list on the screen there. These are the kinds of things on the district wide list right here that would be in our next contemplated zero debt referendum, which we'll be talking about during this school year. And then there are some site specific items as well that address areas that were either identified by our director of operations, our district architect, or the principals as being high needs in those locations. For example, adding a security vestibule at the middle school would mean that all of our schools had a similar kind of entrance system in the district. The other thing that we're doing to prepare for future growth is we have applied, and we've talked about this at at least two board meetings uh, in the last few months for preschool expansion aid. This is a program that the state of New Jersey offers to increase the space available in your in your schools for general education preschool students to be educated when they're three and four years old. We have an obligation for students with special needs. We have dramatically increased the number of seats for general education students, but that's at parent expense. This program would fund the tuition for the children of general education in our preschool programs. But in return, we have to commit to having enough seats for all the three and four-year-olds in the community whose parents want them to access preschool to be able to do so. We will find out in the next six weeks or so whether we've been granted this aid. We we expect that we will be, as many other districts with similar profiles to us have been granted the aid. If we get that aid, the good news, which I don't think everybody has fully processed yet, is those families paying for tuition this year will get a refund of their tuition for this year, and their children will continue going to school either in our preschool for free. It's a swing of ten thousand dollars for families who are paying for their kids to go to our preschool. And we will then start the process of continuing to expand seats as we've been doing over the last few years. And to that end, the finance committee, the board, has been discussing what it would take for us to be able to have room for all three and four-year-olds to access universal preschool over the next uh, bit of time with that preschool aid coming from the state of New Jersey through the idea of an early childhood center where we would have access for all preschool students to go to school in a specifically designed facility for the needs of a three or a four-year-old in a way that our current buildings can't accommodate. We do. We do a really good job at Central and Mount Hora building preschool programs, but those schools were designed for older kids. So this is to build site-specific early childhood center, solve our district-wide kitchen access issue, which we've been talking about for five or more years, and give us the ability to expand to make it a true early childhood center for kindergarten as well, so that we can relieve pressure on the four elementary schools as the enrollments go up over the next ten years. We will talk about this a lot more, uh, but this is work that we're doing behind the scenes with community partners on the finance committee with our district architects so that we are not caught off guard as the students are moving in that I talked about at the top of the presentation. The other thing that is still under consideration is the need for an all-purpose room at Central School. Central School, for those that are not as familiar with the each of the school buildings, is the oldest building in the the district. Personally, from an architectural standpoint, it's the most interesting building in the school district because it was built at a time uh, and in a way that we don't build schools anymore. But it doesn't have a suitable APR that's comparable to the experience at the other three elementary schools. And so as part of these construction projects, we do need to solve for that in the in the near future as well. That's another ongoing project. All of that brings me back to what I said when I was making my opening remarks. It it will be extremely important that members of the community share their voices during the strategic planning process to tell the board, yes, early childhood education is important to us, or no, there should be priorities somewhere else, and this isn't the area that we should go down. We need to hear from the community about what's best for us in the immediate future, but also what's best for us five years and ten years down the road. With that, I'll take questions from the board if there are any that I can answer.
Are there any questions from board members?
Dr. Mingle, you mentioned the grant for preschool that is only given to us if we can accommodate, or we currently have the space for all preschoolers.
So the commitment is we get the money for the current students, and and our commitment is over the course of five years, we keep on adding more spaces.
Thank you.
So it's immediate, but then grows over the course of time.
Additional questions from board members?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Okay, we do not have an item of discussion on tonight's agenda, so we will move to committee reports. Curriculum and Technology Committee, Mr. Tor.
So we met on Monday, the twenty, Monday, the twenty-sixth. Uh, first, a couple of, a couple of areas I'll cover up, three actually. So the first was looking at the five-year plan and the twenty-four, twenty-five goals. Uh, two key areas we looked at were student achievement, where we focus on ELA and math, and also within that social emotional learning uh, as a foundation for future academic growth and success. Second area we looked at was belonging, um, specifically prioritizing cultural values and belonging within the community and also individual student backgrounds and voice. And then the third element of belonging was prioritizing um, improvements in middle school culture. And at the end of that session, we recommended that moving the committee goals to the full board for bringing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tor. I'm sorry.
I've got some more.
I apologize. I thought I thought you paused. Please continue.
Sorry.
It's okay. Uh, spring NJ SLA preliminary results, we focused in on grade level overview and the strategic plan achievement goals, and specifically there looked at transparent benchmarks or achievement in the next school year. We also discussed as a committee the uh, opportunities for teachers and principals and the administration to reiterate the importance of nightly reading at home. So while we obviously can't mandate that, uh, we did suggest that perhaps Dr. Mingle and the and the administration goes back to principles and talks about perhaps integrating that into the back-to-school night discussion or a letter home to students, etc., parents, et cetera, et cetera. I have one more area. Be brief, promise. Um, there is actually a pretty exciting academic support program pilot or ASAP that was developed by Miss Mrs. Messinger, which is the middle school assistant principal. And this is really to help students who don't necessarily fall into needing an IEP, but there's clear clear suggestion they need additional assistance, posing the three categories. Uh, there's level one support, level two, level three. As you would expect, your level one is relatively um, less a need, so the the student will be pulled in in a specific ring period and assigned a teacher to help with an intervention. Level two goes a step uh, a step further with co-teaching within the class. And level three is the most intensive, and that will be a pull-out program for for the sixth grade, uh, for identified students. And we'll hear more about that over time, but I think uh, both staff and the administration, and we were pretty excited by this program and the opportunity it offered. And with that, I
Are you finished? Are you sure? May I speak? All right, then.
Please.
Well done, Steve.
Thank you, Richard.
Yes, very well done. Uh, Finance Operations and Security Committee met Monday, September ninth. Um, we had counsel with us for a part of that meeting. Appearing tonight on uh, the agenda as item B seven are the committee's recommended goals for the coming year. Um, the committee does recommend the adoption of those goals. Uh, we spent a considerable amount of time um, being advised on uh, our next steps with regard to evaluating an early childhood center. The uh, business administrator, Mr. Havel, presented us with a summary of results of the recent audit. A complete audit presentation will be made to the board on November eighteenth. Uh, we received an update on the middle school wetlands delineation, which we had submitted to the uh, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. Um, the NJDEP requested some minor revisions. We do expect that the revised um, map will be approved, which approval will be good for five years with a five-year possible extension, so up to ten years. Uh, we had uh, the initial conversation with regard to fiber um, access, a fiber network, creation of a fiber network. And we moved the October meeting to October seventh, and that was the last item there. And seeing no other committee meetings, we will move to the first opportunity for public commentary. This is the first of two opportunities for public commentary. I ask that anyone interested in addressing the board raise their hand or use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. Each commentator is asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Please begin by stating your name and address and by directing your comments to the presiding officer. Please note that the board welcomes comments from the public, but this is not intended as a question and answer session. If appropriate, the superintendent or presiding officer may respond following the public commentary. For this first opportunity, we ask that your comments be limited to agenda items. There will be a second opportunity for all other comments later in the meeting. Looking first to the room and seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak? Last chance. Seeing none. Do I have a motion to close public commentary?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. First opportunity for public commentary is closed. Dr. Mingle, do you have any comments on agenda items?
Just one. I want to call the board's attention to item A five. This is an educational research project. Uh, this is here at the middle school. Dr. Miller, who's one of our science teachers, is working with uh, the person who you'd be approving here, Ms. O'Brien, on which will bring two lessons to our students in science class. I just wanted to point out that Ms. O'Brien is the lead astronomy educator at the Smithsonian Air and Space Museum, so quite an exciting educational research uh, collaboration, and thank you to Dr. Miller for bringing that to us.
Thank you very much. Does any member of the board wish to pull any item for uh, board consideration for a separate vote or a conversation? Seeing none, Ms. Keller.
Motion to approve items A one through A six, B one through B ten, C one through C eighteen, and C eighteen is a new item which is resolved that the Board of Education accepts the resignation of Nicole Dalton as substitute teacher effective September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. That's the new C eighteen, and then D one through D two.
Motion. Second.
All right, um, I will call the roll. Mrs. Dalton.
Upstein.
Mr. Desai.
Yes.
Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Malpetta.
Yes.
Mr. Otto.
Yes.
Mr. Tor.
Yes.
Mr. Valentino.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
And Mrs. Zon.
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Thank you. We do have an unfinished business item that's been carried a couple of times. This is a board retreat item, board self-evaluation and goal setting. Dr. Mingle, you want to help lead us on this?
Yes. So at uh, each year, the board does a self-evaluation. These results were shared quite a while ago, so just a quick summary of the evaluation results. The board goes through nine different areas. This is from the New Jersey School Boards Association, identifies areas that it feels are the greatest strength of the board in all different kinds of operational spaces, and then areas where there's the biggest opportunity for improvement. For the sake of the discussion about goal setting, the areas for improvement that the board identified had to do with meeting attendance and and preparation, following policies around operations, the mission and goals, communicating uh, with the larger community a- and attending after-school activities and other things when available. So typically what happens as part of that discussion is if there's anything that's really about the operations of the board that needs to be addressed, this would be a place to talk about that goal. The only thing I recommended to the board is around the strategic plan. We all know that this is the strategic planning year, and adopting a new strategic plan is one of the most important things the board can do because it sets sort of a vision for the the next five years, but that's not really part of the self-evaluation.
Um, if you find it helpful, on the back of the agenda, you will find the twenty-three, twenty-four board goals from last year. So at that, I open it up for conversation. Okay, so I think we at the very least need a board goal that relates to the um, new strategic plan. You'll see that our last year goals uh, included support the implementation of year four of the strategic plan priorities. Um, I think that we are currently in year five, so it would be appropriate to carry that forward with support the implementation of year five, and then perhaps have an additional board goal um, support the um, undertaking of a new strategic plan. Do we have thoughts on that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's two of them right there. Um, we also had previous board goals around the adoption of a five-year capital plan. We successfully completed that one. Um, but perhaps this would be a a place that the board would perhaps set a goal on um, relating to the next referendum, which is a no-tax referendum that would be um, in support of the recently passed capital plan. Is that something people think is good?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, there we are. We have three goals. We successfully negotiated a successive, a successor collective bargaining agreement and do not have negotiations for this coming year, so I don't think we need a goal surrounding that. Okay. Um, we did also have a goal last year, draft communications messaging strategies for key key community topics. Uh, this was our way of trying to have some sort of a board goal surrounding um, supporting the administration in addressing um, climate and belonging within our middle school primarily. I don't know, do we want to have something similar to that for the coming year? And if so, language like this or something else?
So I think we keep it um, I because I think we intentionally made the language be a little open-ended. Um, so when I read draft communications messaging strategy for community topics, when I think about what was just presented, I feel like there's between the strategic plan engagement, between updates in the community around enrollment, I feel like it's still valid to keep it. So I would say we keep it. I I wouldn't change the language.
I think this is also an opportunity to um, for the personal negotiations and communication committee to um, really pick up the communication piece of that committee now that negotiations are done. Uh, because we do have a number of items where messaging is something we need to be considering. Things like early childhood, the preschool program, et cetera. Um, growth and facility growth within within the district.
One of the things that um, was like a takeaway for me at the nine eleven ceremony is one of the students, I think it was Bellman, spoke to Konstantin, um, spoke to community service and like the, you know, the value that he found in it. And I do think it's something that would be a great initiative for all of our schools and elementary schools to do like consistently with a real plan, just teaching just teaching them, you know, what it is to give back to your community. And, and to your point about, you know, whether it's environmentally, whatever that looks like, that type of community service, I think teaches our children a really great lesson.
I agree. I think that probably how we craft that as a board goal would be to, for the board to support the administration in.
Going out in their respective.
Yeah, those types of efforts. We do need to at least contemplate whether or not we need a board goal that relates to board operations, because that wasn't an item on the board, self-evaluation. Does anyone have any thoughts on that? I think that that drives most directly at a continuing effort to comply with board norms as well as perhaps encouraging board members to participate in school events more than, you know, we have a more robust presence at school events. Is that something we should set as a goal?
I think, I think it makes sense, right? If we're going to be speaking to the district just to be involved in that, to see what it is, you know, firsthand. I do also think we, we have to be strategic in how we do it because it is a commitment, right? And the commitments do come up when you're in committees, et cetera. But I think it's a great idea. And I think it'll allow us to have additional insight to our goals and how we handle what's, what happens in the coming years as well.
Does anyone else have any thoughts on that? I don't want us to be burdened with too many. I think we're at five at this point, although perhaps the two strategic plan ones kind of go together.
Can we just review, I guess, number three? Are we keeping the same language, draft communications messaging strategies for key community topics? Is that what we're using for this year?
Unless you have, unless you have thoughts on it.
I, I think it's vague, and I know we left it intentionally vague last year. I don't know that it needs to be that vague this year. In my opinion, when you have a vague goal, it's difficult to accomplish because there's no clear metrics on how to actually accomplish it. And that's when I read number three, that's the feeling I get. That said, I don't have an exact solution or wording to make it less vague, but it just seems quite open-ended. And I just get nervous that if it's open-ended, we're not going to accomplish it because we don't know what we're trying to accomplish. Yep.
I think the reason we kept it vague was that we were going to say, we would sort of know what is an opportunity, what is an opportunity that we say, this is a, this is a key and important community topic, and so now we need to do a messaging strategy around it. But I mean, we could add, I would want, I wouldn't want it to give specifics and then have it be limited by that. Do so, so, but we could put.
Can we put examples of? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would help.
If we add examples, though it feels a little bit more concrete, but doesn't feel like, well, this is it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do we need to determine those examples tonight?
I think we should probably, because what's going to happen is that these board goals that we're, Dr. Mingle here is diligently writing down our thoughts, is going to craft them in ways that look really super. And they're going to come back to our next agenda as an item to be approved. Yep.
I might if I make a couple, so.
I would love that.
I mean, I'm just thinking about what, things that'll happen this year where we'll need your help with coming up with a communication strategy. There's a zero-debt referendum, there's always a communication strategy around that. It would be, with no offense to the Finance Committee, it might be helpful to pull that off the Finance Committee and give it to the Communications Committee.
I approve of that idea.
Strategic planning, we'll need a lot of outreach to make sure that we're getting to parts of the community that maybe I don't reach the same way that you might be able to reach. And wherever we go with the conversation about an early childhood center is a whole different part of the community than we're even used to talking to. So beyond even the district goals, those are already three big examples, I think.
Well, let's put them in.
Okay.
I think that also has the benefit, we pu, we publish this with our agendas, and so people will see this. And that's a messaging document itself. Let them know that, that these are things we want to communicate with them about.
Maybe whether or not we include the early childhood center specifically or just a message around growth. I think there's a lot of community members who still believe that we're about to close a school. Like not happening, right? There's a lot of, I think, misinformation about, oh, we're on the decline, and that's absolutely not the case. So I think maybe it's a broader message of growth, maybe less specifically about the community, you know, the early childhood center, so.
And typically I'd put a draft out there, and we have a lot of time between meetings. Our next meeting is until October twenty-eighth, so we have a lot of room to iterate back and forth. And if we want to bring the Personnel Committee together to talk about it some more, we have time to do that, too.
I think that's, that leaves us with some pretty solid board goals. So if we're all content with that, we'll let Dr. Mingle do some drafting. Okay, all right, okay. Moving on to a new business item, we've been talking about the election calendar, the possibility of moving board member elections from November to April. Dr. Mingle and Mr. Hegel put together a memo which took a look at the process for doing that, kind of an estimated cost. And so we're putting this back for further conversation here. Did everyone have a chance to read the memo? Thoughts? Questions? I did attend last week, is it last week already? The high school's most recent meeting, where it did appear on their, their agenda, and I just want to share that they did discuss it. They were briefed on what the law provided, and they seemed interested in knowing more about what the K eight districts were interested in doing. So that's kind of a continuing question on their minds. They haven't really jumped one way or the other on it. They want to know what we're up to and the other K eights as well. And I do think they intend to bring that up at the next Regionalization and Shared Services Commission meeting, which is later in the month.
I mean, we said yes to it, right? We're all on board?
We did, yeah, that, that was the, the sense that, you know, the members that were present at the last meeting, that there was interest, yes, in moving the twenty-twenty-five election of board members from November to April. The deadline to advise the county that we intend to do that is in late January, so the suggestion was made in the memo, and I think it's probably smart, that we put it on the reorganization agenda, which is the first agenda meeting in January, because then all board members affected by a shortening of the term will have been seated. We have one board member yet to be elected, and that's this November. And that person will be seated in January, and so everybody then affected will, will be able to say that, yes, this is something they want to do. So the next step here would be for us, if, if the board is in agreement that they wish to do this, that we would put this on the agenda, that the reorganization agenda beginning of January or a vote of the board. Okay.
Yeah, just remind me, the, if we move the board election to April, schools are open that day, correct?
Well, here's the beauty, and it's beautiful. Schools are open that day, but it turns out that if we do this, we have a lot more control over the process. Petitions for election would come to us, not to the county clerk, and we can set the hours for the polls. So we can choose for the polling, which takes place in our schools, to happen after school is closed for the day.
Okay, I'm good with that.
When we do it practically, we might, if, if the high school also changes at the same time, it would make a lot of sense to make sure the hours that they select are the same as the hours that we select, but it doesn't have to be from six AM to eight PM. Another factor in doing that is it does reduce the cost of the election in that you're not paying poll workers for fifteen hours, it would be some lower number.
Four o'clock to eight o'clock in the evening.
I think unfortunately you would have a significant less of a turnout.
Yeah, we, we talked about that.
But.
You're right.
I would, I would say maybe ten to twenty percent of what we'd normally have.
I think that's generous, honestly. I think it'd be probably lower.
Only have ten to twenty percent of people that actually vote?
Yes.
Or ten to, or ten to twenty percent less?
No, no, no. Ten to twenty percent total.
Will show up. But the ones that do will probably know who's on the ballot and care to be there. One of the things about having your elections in November is that people show up not knowing anything about the Board of Education. They're there for the other ballot items. And this, this year, it's presidential election, right? So they're there for the top-of-the-ticket type of things. And then they just tick off whoever was lucky enough to draw one of the first three spots on the board. So, you know, there is some thought that moving it to April would allow the candidates to be less subject to the whims of the county drawing positions.
Yeah, I think it takes the political component out of it, or at least lessens it.
Lessens it.
We talked about, right now, the year is sort of split. So new board members join in, it doesn't align to the budgeting cycle, it doesn't align to the superintendent evaluation cycle. So with this, it would be, it would align with the actual school year. So it would be kind of, and I think Mr. Moffeta mentioned, like, when you join as a new board member, you kind of feel like you're inheriting what's been decided already, and so you're kind of seeing stuff in process and already in play. And so then you can join at a time when you actually get to see things in real time impact the schools and the school year. So that, that's, I don't know, it's smart. Of course, I, I do feel for Mrs. Dalton, who probably has to come up to speed because she would be impacted by it.
Yes.
As, as would we all, everyone sitting here today, with the exception of Mr. Desai, who's not running again.
Lucky one.
Will, would in fact have their term shortened by approximately seven months.
I think this is, this is good, but I think we have to, you know, in, in the spirit of communications and transparency, we need to make sure that gets out, that should be things, the board goals essentially, right? It's a, it's a communication, because I could hear a lot of people saying, oh, I had no clue, how come I didn't get to go for the board, and they weren't on the general election?
There will be some tight timing here, because if we are contemplating approving this at the first meeting in January, the notice to the county that we're doing this is within days thereafter. And then we would have to set the date when we, we want petitions to come in. So I think, yes, that we, we should be saying right now to all of you out there listening and to the press who is sitting over there listening, that it is the intention of the Warren Township Board of Education to put on its agenda in January a motion to move elections of board members from November twenty-twenty-five to April of twenty-twenty-five. So take note.
Got it, got it.
All right. Anything further on that, anyone? No? Okay. We're going to move on to the second opportunity for public commentary. This is the second of two opportunities. Again, please limit your comments to three minutes. If you wish to speak, raise your hand or use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom. This is on any topic at all, so I'm going to look first to the room. Seeing none. Does anyone in our Zoom audience wish to adjust, address the board? Is there somebody?
Yes.
Ms. Andrews, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, hi, thanks. Nancy Andrews, President of the Warren Township Education Association. I just wanted to say on behalf of the WTA, extend my warmest congratulations to Mrs. Dalton's appointment to the board. Your dedication and experience will undoubtedly bring valuable insight and leadership to our district. And I look forward to collaborating with you to advance the goals of our district and support the members that we all represent. So I wish you all the new success in this role.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Does anyone else wish to address the board? Last chance. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close second public commentary?
Motion to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The second public commentary is now closed. We will be moving into executive session. Ms. Keller.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA ten four dash eleven permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss specific prospective or current employees, unless all who could be adversely affected request an open session, and a matter involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property with public funds. Action will not be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately thirty minutes. And be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Abstained, opposed? The board is in executive session.
Hey. Aye.
Right.
Thank you. It's the same one, it is verbal.
Motion to return to public session?
Motion to return.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The board is now in session and?
Motion to close.
Second, aye.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? The meeting has ended. Thank you.